And in particular, the term fascist has been used to describe those who have made the decision. And you know, this point in our political debates with each other, it's, you know, the term fascist has become this really, it's a boring and vacuous insult that you hurl at people with whom you disagree when you have no real argument to offer yourself. You know, in an actual fascist nation, you know, a fascist institution such as a school is part of an apparatus of the state, and that's designed to instill a politically-based subservience to the state, and the state is the encompassing whole. And so, in the actual present circumstance, you find that the Board of Education and the school system are taking into account individual concerns of parents as something that no fascist entity would ever permit. So, you know, let's be very serious about this. What they're doing is not fascism, it's common sense, it's human decency. You know, it is the truth that, you know, children are the primary loving responsibility of their parents, and so, yes, their parents definitely do matter and count when they're determining what their children are exposed to when they're out of their direct care. You know, the Board of Education of the public school system should take into account the concerns of parents, does not make them fascists. It makes them responsible. It means that they're doing their jobs. You know, and I'll sum up with this, you know, a graphic depiction of sexual activity is a far cry from Atticus Finch pleading for truth and justice in a court case. And so, certainly, those who are charged with overseeing education in our county schools are well within reason to review titles of concerns to the parents of the children who attend those schools. You know, we, as commissioners, provide funding and support to our schools and to our Board of Education, and so, we are also ultimately accountable to those same parents and to our own consciences as well. And so, I just want to clearly state on the record here that I totally support the decision of Dr. McCabe and the Board of Education to review these titles of concern. And Commissioner, that's it for me this morning. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. Commissioner Kyler?
Thank you, and thanks for those comments about the schools. I really appreciate it, having been on the Board of Ed during the pandemic times. It was interesting. It was sad, who calls names versus having facts, and it's a lot of them out there. And I'm a fascist, a racist, a homophobic, I forget what else. But, you know, if that's all they can, if they can't find a legitimate complaint and want a name call, it just takes away their argument. So, I thank you. I want to start out with a couple of things I didn't make it to in the past week. And the tractor pull at the Ag Center, that's a great event, I wish I'd had time, and I just didn't. And then Raising Cane, the soft opening and the ribbon cutting, and it's interesting, which I guess is good. We beat on social media occasionally, but it just amazes me with people waiting in line to go there, and people praising it, and then people condemning it, which, if you don't want to go, don't get in line, don't go. But why are you condemning it? And I thought it was such an appropriate comment, and I guess they're based in Louisiana, I'm not sure. It said, "If you made a comment like this in Louisiana, you wouldn't be around anymore." So, maybe we're pretty forgiving in Maryland. Did go to Veterans Advisory Council, as always, a great group, and it seems like the numbers in there are picking up. And it's just a great group, and we've said it, and said it, and said it, but veterans, if you need something, please reach out. We mentioned last week, and I'll mention again, all the carnivals. I walked in Manchester's Parade. I've gone to every carnival we've had time to go to and tried to support them, and it's some great food at them, and we've been blessed with pretty good weather. It's, the weather isn't helping the farmers, but it's helping the carnivals. I did get to ride in Reese's Parade last night. Rhonda and I both got to ride in the fire truck, and I got to do the siren and the horn a little bit, and it's just, it's interesting. And I understand these parades are hard. Of course, Reese's, the last parade they had was 25 years ago, but this is their 75th year, so they did one. It's hard in today's world to orchestrate a parade with traffic, with state roads, county roads, et cetera, et cetera, but it's crazy to look at the kids and a lot of the adults up to and including my age adults, they love it. They're sitting there waving, and they love it, and so, I applaud our volunteer fire companies that do the parades. It's good for the community, and the carnivals are good for the community and good for the volunteer fire companies, and they're not easy to put out either. And I know Manchester, I think, was hurt a little bit, not so much by weather as threatening weather, and it just seems like that keeps the crowd away when they threaten weather. And before I get criticized, before I talk about the last subject, I do love Carroll County and the fire companies and the people out there, it's just awesome. Now, I want to talk about my next love, wrestling, amateur wrestling. This week's Fargo in the Dakotas, and it is an awesome tournament. If you're interested in watching any of it, it's freestyle and Greco, not high school style, a little different. And it's everybody from the whole country, and it's just a great event. You can get on Flow Wrestling, you can watch matches, you can see results. Many of you that pay any attention to wrestling recognize Helen Margarlos and Kevin Snyder were our country's two gold medalists in the Olympics one year, and they both were from Maryland. And it is interesting, the girls and boys both in Maryland, they have some competitors right now that are going to be as good as these guys were, and it's fun to watch them. There's an under-16 group, and then there's a high school age group. And the other thing about it that I feel strongly is lacking in so many things today, A, everybody doesn't get a trophy. You earn your trophy. And B, I applaud every wrestler that goes. You can go and be 0-2, typically in this style of wrestling, two losses, you're done. You can be 0-2. I don't think any of the Marylanders were 0. A couple 1-2, some 5-2 and you don't place, but it takes a lot of guts to enter something like this, knowing you're going to compete with the best of the country, and sometimes get it handed to you. And it's so easy to be a big fish in a little pond and never step out of the pond and find out what the world's like, and these kids are doing it. And I give them a lot of credit, and, you know, we always want to say, "Kids aren't the same today." We got some great kids today, and we just need to mentor them and guide them in the right directions. Thank you, guys.
Okay, thanks. Commissioner Gordon?
Thank you. On Friday, I attended Bastille Day event at Jeannie Bird Baking Company in Westminster. It was a very nice event, wide array of French fruit from escargot to French wines, and it's a very nice evening, and of course, you know, hosted by Jeannie Bird Baking Company's own Bernie Vogel, which is a mainstay in Westminster. It's always great to see our local business owners and small business owners having various events and supporting them, so it was a great event. Bernie had had, actually, I think, if I remember correctly, three different events that week with the Friday night dinner being the last, and I know he had a very, very, very busy week for him and his staff. Also this week, the wait is over, as we know. You know, Raising Cane's is open in Westminster, and I heard everything from 20-minute lines to in the drive-thru to a wide array of commentary on the food, and a lot of excitement. Always good to see another business, different kind of business, but that's what it's all about, is, you know, a variety of businesses and entities in our community. I was unable to attend that this week, I was hoping to, but between planning, zoning meetings, our VAC meeting yesterday, and then a few other meetings, I was unable to attend that, but I do want to get out and meet the individuals running that over there. I know they've already met with a couple nonprofits, and they're looking to support our community, and I think that's fantastic to have them. So, welcome to Westminster and Carroll County. Also coming up, we have an event I wanted to mention just to the public. We have a functional training exercise planned for Cranberry Station Elementary. The Carroll County Public School System and the Sheriff's Department and the Department of Public Safety and the Department of Fire Emergency Medical Services will be conducting a functional training exercise on Tuesday, July 25th, from 7:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. at Cranberry Station Elementary, and also at Winters Mill High School will be utilized during the exercise. Purpose of the exercise is a test each of the participating agency's emergency protocols for school critical incidents. Exercise will be conducted in the area of Gortschitz Road and Center Street in Westminster. All the roadways will continue to be open, however motorists should observe emergency vehicles during this time. And Cranberry Station Elementary School will be closed to the public for business that day due to the exercise, and anyone needing any additional information should reach out to the Director of Elementary Schools. Just wanted to put that out there because sometimes you see interesting things in the community, and you're not sure if it's something serious, or it may be a training exercise. So, just be aware. Also, we have August 1st, Tuesday, August 1st, will be National Night Out. There are multiple locations here in Westminster, but obviously, all of us have it throughout all the various parts of the county, and I will be moving around Westminster that evening, trying to attend as many locations as I can, always a good event. And August 5th, we have the Babylon Vault Company event for, we're having a Vietnam Veteran Welcome Home pinning. That event will run from noon, I believe, till about 7:00 in the evening. There'll be live music, there's going to be John Price, a 99-year-old World War II Navy submariner will be there. We'll also have a number of other events included within that, so if anyone's in the community and wants to make it out, that would be something to attend. That'll be held over in New Windsor. And then, last but not least, the same day, I also have in Westminster the Citizens' Fire Academy with the Westminster Fire Department, so that will be open to residents or business owners over the age of 18. More information can be found on the Westminster Fire Department's Facebook page or their website to pre-register, which is required. And one last thing I will mention, and I know there was a press release this morning, spotted lanternflies are being seen in Carroll County again this year. We've already seen some in the Westminster area, and my only thoughts on that is, if you see it, squash it, kill it, and report it, so we can get this in as to where they are, turning up, because they're incredibly invasive, and we do not want them in our community. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Gary?
Good morning, Carroll County. I want to start off by this morning by wishing my beautiful wife happy anniversary. We met-
Happy anniversary.
Thank you, thank you. We met 36 years ago in a hallway at South Carroll High School, and 27 years later, we're celebrating an anniversary. A couple moves, a lot of triumphs, tragedies, three teenagers. It has not been boring at all, so happy anniversary, Chris. Also, I want to mention, we've got a couple of things going on down in Mount Airy the next couple of weeks. Of course, we've got the Mount Airy Fire Company Carnival, which is a big deal, right there at the very large carnival grounds in Mount Airy, from the 31st of July to the 5th of August, so get out and support your local fire departments. And the Mount Airy Mile, which is a really cool event, is taking place on August 12th, and it starts at 9:00 on Main Street. So, if you're interested in participating in the Mount Airy Mile, I would encourage you to go to the website, you can just type that into the internet, it'll come up and you can register. It's for a good cause, so. You know, I appreciate some of my colleagues' comments regarding the school board. You know, I'm always reminding others and myself that we are elected officials with legislative and executive powers. We are not administrators. We pay people to do that, so when we have a concern or we want to voice our opinions on something, I think it's important to do so. You know, I've been in, I guess you could say, I hate to use the term politics, but I've been involved in politics in the county for about 20 years when I first ran for the House of Delegates back in 2002, and there's always been a vacuum of sorts in terms of news. So, I'm excited that in addition to the Carroll County Times and the great local reporter they have, there's some additional news outlets that have cropped up. There's the Maryland Muckraker, there's a Carroll County Observer, and then there's the Informed Carol, and they recently did a story on this issue regarding the school board and these books. I think it's important to mention that, of course, parents should be concerned. Moms are leading the fight on a lot of these things, but if you pay taxes in Carroll County, you ought to be concerned too, because you're paying for that, whether you have kids in the high school system or not. Maybe they're gone, maybe you've got grandkids your own and they live somewhere else, you're all paying into that particular system. So, it is important to pay attention, and it is perfectly reasonable to be concerned about what's in the libraries, because you're paying for it. The materials in question, I do have to say, did shock me, and we've all seen some wild things out there, but I do have to say, what was in the libraries really kind of threw me for a loop. People want those books removed, and I appreciate the Board of Education responding and listening to those requests. We're not talking about banning anything, we're just talking about removing it from the school system, the taxpayer-funded school system, so it seems perfectly reasonable to me. In terms of the name-calling that took place, you know, I talked about this a little bit a few weeks back. I posted a video on this subject on my Facebook page, and I talked a little bit about how these discussions and these sort of issues get started, and they do always start out the same way. They start with the name-calling, the labels. You know, you're labeled a phobic, you're labeled an extremist, you might even be labeled a terrorist. That is the tactic, that is meant to try to silence you. And then ironically, I mean, Commissioner McGlady, you said it eloquently about the term fascism, because the next step that people use when they're trying to push an agenda is to involve the government, have the government do the work for them, and force that will upon people, and that is the actual definition of fascism and Marxism and all these isms we're always talking about. So, the irony is not lost on any of us, it's not lost on me certainly. I want people in the county to be aware of what's going on and the importance of paying attention, because you are paying for it. And it's something that, again, I appreciate the fact that there are some outlets out there now, people reporting on these things. It's important, the more coverage, the better, the more people talking about issues, the better, the more people watching these open sessions, the better. So, I commend the people, the county, who are trying to cover what's going on in the county, and I would encourage people to pay even more attention than you are now. It is very important to do so, because again, it's your taxpayer money, it's your family, it's your son, it's your daughter, it's your granddaughter. You are the future of where the discussions go and what happens, so I would encourage you to stay on that, and I truly appreciate people for highlighting what's going on in the county. It's important. Thank you.
Okay, a couple of things. Baltimore Metropolitan Council has a meeting tomorrow. It allows the Baltimore region to discuss issues, mostly about economic growth and development. Where I'm a board member, I'll be participating. And then Cafe What-a-Day is a new establishment down in Eldersburg on 26 and Clees Mill, and they have a grand opening on Saturday. Proceeds are going to the firehouses, Sykesville and Winfield, and I think there may be one other, maybe Camber, but I'm not sure. Kalpech Patel is one of the partners, he is a super young man, always giving back to the community, so get the opportunity to be there for the grand opening, that's awesome. They are open now, and I just share with you, it's like Commissioner Gordon said, another opportunity for small business and small business growth here in a community with diversity and really good food. So, okay, why don't we walk right into e-bikes ordinance? Lisa, did you want to come up? And I think we had a couple of weeks ago, it was open for public comment, and public comment has since closed, and now it's an opportunity for us to make a decision. Mr. Burke, is there anything more to it than that at this point?
No, we received the public comment at the public hearing, and now it's up to decide whether or not to proceed or not.
Okay. So, with that said, are there any questions, concerns, actions that want to be taken? You know, I appreciate the briefing paper saying, "No change allowed, allow only certain classes of e-bikes in all areas, allow certain classes of e-bikes only in designated areas." And, yeah, we'll leave it at that, so it's open for discussion. Any comments?
I can start.
Okay.
So, I certainly took points made by, you know, both the equestrians and by the, I guess the proper term would be cyclists for them. You know, having ridden horses and having, you know, whenever I go visit my mom, I'm always hopping on a horse, and it's interesting because, you know, like my stepdad will come by on a tractor and they don't even care, but then like something blows at their feet and it's the end of the world. So, I certainly understand the concerns of equestrians about, you know, they're coming around the corner on a horse, and then all of a sudden, there's somebody racing by on a bike. I also, you know, totally get the perspective of the cyclists themselves, because, you know, these trails are not exclusive to any one type of use. And, you know, whether it happens to be because you just are a little bit older, or, you know, you have some kind of medical issue, or you're some kind of health issue you're trying to overcome, or just because you like the electric bikes, the e-bikes, right? So, I totally understand that. So, my thought would be, and again, taking into consideration the concerns and the desires of both the equestrians and the cyclists, I would recommend that, you know, maybe we do some kind of experimental trial on one of these trails for a certain period of time, where both horses and e-bikes use that trail, and after a certain amount of time, we'll see what does and what doesn't work. What I would say, though, is that there are certain trails that I would at least not, I would be a little more concerned about opening up to the e-bikes altogether. And based on what I could tell from the equestrians who were here during the public hearing, it seems like Union Mills and Hoshua seem to be the trails that they mention the most. It seemed to be like those are the ones they tended to gravitate toward the most. So, if I, if we do decide to proceed in that direction, that we're going to allow limited use for a certain amount of time on a certain trail, I would suggest not going with Union Mills or Hoshua, again, given the amount of use that the equestrians put into those trails. And I guess I kind of, and then, of course, the other one I have a question about, I'm sorry, the Gillis Falls Trails, it says that they're, the Carroll County Equestrian Center is right there, right?
It's in that area, correct.
And so, in my mind, we may not want to open that up to an e-bike experiment, because that is, I guess, the heart of the equestrian center. So, my thought would be then, I guess the last place would be to allow some kind of trial at Piney Run, because that was the one that I, unless I'm mistaken, and somebody, please do correct me, that was the trail that seemed to be mentioned the least. Actually, I don't remember if it was, I don't remember if it was mentioned at all.
The undeveloped side of Piney Run Park?
So, I, right, so my thought would be, if we want to proceed with some kind of trial to see how it works, right, that Piney Run would be the place to do it.
Okay. Any other comments?
Yes, and my thoughts are probably very different. E-bikes, I don't quite understand the concern of e-bikes. They're relatively quiet. Young people can go faster on a mountain bike than an e-bike's gonna have you go. Now, they can also pedal and go faster on those. I grew up with horses, thoroughbreds, riding horses, and no offense to the equestrian people, if you can't control your horse, you probably ought to keep it at home. I don't understand, I wouldn't want to see bikers say, "I don't want horses on my trail." I don't want equestrian to say, "I don't want e-bikes on my trail." I'd love, and the other thing is, you guys are constantly in a state of change. Some trails get improved, some trails get more dormant. I'd love to see us say, "Yeah, e-bikes are fine," and let the department decide where they want them, when they want them. And the other thing that I think this is a giant step forward, and we talk about this with other subjects, Carroll County is essentially, and most counties, complaint-driven. You don't have people out there policing the trails every day, it's complaint-driven. There could have been motorbikes on the trails, there could have been a lot of things on the trails, moving forward by, we're clarifying what's allowed on the trails, and I think that's a good step forward. So, I just think this is something that ought to happen. We got to see e-bikes, and I look at it, I don't see a teenager buying a $4,000 Class 1 e-bike to terrorize the trails. It's just, you know, it's more going to be people that want to continue riding and need a little bit of help. So, I just feel like we ought to say, yeah, e-bikes should be allowed on the trails at the discretion of the Department of Wreck and Parks, and let you guys go with it.
Okay. Any other comments?
Oh, well, a question. Do you guys have a problem with that?
With allowing e-bikes?
Yeah.
I don't think we have a problem with it, because they're already out there.
Exactly. Okay, thanks.
Any other comments?
Well, I think you made some good points, I agree with some of them. Obviously, you've got multiple users of these trails, not against any of the users on any side. I do think, though, the one question, looking at the list of goals in regards to this, you know, we're complaint-driven. So, being that we're complaint-driven, I guess the question I do have for you this morning, though, is that one of the goals is listed as educate the public on proper trail etiquette, and I know, obviously, there's signage at various trails and so forth and so on, but are we looking to do anything more proactively than just have signage up regarding trail etiquette? What's, what is the process and the plan in that regard?
So, currently, the, after a decision is made today, putting out signage at the trailheads, and in addition, we have a trail etiquette pamphlet that we are devised to send out as well for that public education. We could also move that into a more proactive direction and have community involvement in terms of educating, having open sessions or open houses, that sort of thing.
I think all those would be ideal. I think the other thing maybe to consider would be, since you have active social media, even if it would just be something, some limited video talking about this, because, you know, and I hate to say, and it's not a reflection on anyone or any group, but people, we all see signs all the time, doesn't mean we read them and take them into consideration. And that's not knocking on your staff or anybody, just the reality that just because something's there, doesn't mean someone's going to read it. And I wanted to ask you real quickly, so Maryland, what's the status of the state of Maryland right now with e-bikes on trails?
They allow Class 1 e-bikes, and I do a lot of traveling and go to many different parks in many different states, and it seems like Class 1 is what is the accepted e-bike on all the trails. National Park Service has also allowed e-bikes per superintendent approval, per the park and their ordinances that they have there. E-bikes will never be allowed within the national preserved areas, National Park preserved areas, but, you know, neither are horses allowed there. So, you know, we have that precedent set in many different places. I do a lot up in the Pennsylvania Grand Canyon area. Class 1 e-bikes has been allowed there on those trails for the past six years, I've been posted that way. But I'd like to jump back to your previous question, if I may, for a moment. We currently are doing some trail etiquette education through some volunteers from Moore that come to Hoshua, and they do weekly rides with individuals, and with those rides, the etiquette is pushed upon or brought to the attention of the attendees of those programs. of those programs. They're very well-attended. These people are also invested in doing a lot of trail work with myself and our department so that we're improving the trails, so that some of the issues, like a mountain bike or an e-bike, because both can do it, come around a blind corner and spook a horse and rider. We're trying to eliminate those kind of things. We have been working on that kind of stuff for years. You know, I've been with the county 21 years now, but I have been involved with Hoshua for 30, over 30 years, and the trails out there. So I'm very familiar with Union Mills, Spiegel Hill, the Hoshua property, know that inside out and backwards. And, you know, these are some issues that have been addressed in my time working with the county. So, and we're going to continue to work with them.
I appreciate that. I mean, obviously, the big thing is safety for everybody.
Yes.
And of course, sometimes things just happen. We all know that, whether it's happenstance or just, you know, timing when people come around a corner. But obviously, the more we can do to be proactive and keep everybody in the community safe, I greatly appreciate you all working on that.
And that's what I'm trying, talking about with the blind turns. We're trying to eliminate those by making turns more larger, eliminating some of the blind spots so that there's a longer sight of, a line of sight, so that both riders, horses, and pedestrians can see what would be coming at them or from behind them.
I appreciate that. Is, just out of curiosity, besides the state, within the state of Maryland, say Baltimore Frederick County, as well as the state of Maryland, are there any trails that they've exclusively prohibited e-bikes on at this point?
To my knowledge, if a mountain bike is allowed on a trail, the e-bikes are also allowed. But with the stipulation that it has to be a Class 1 and under 750 watt e-bike. And that has been what I've seen throughout, not just the state of Maryland, but other states and jurisdictions as well.
And they're not, correct me if I'm wrong, they're not allowed on the Western Maryland rail trail, correct?
That I don't know. I've seen them on the NCR.
Yes.
So I'm not sure about that trail.
Okay. I guess my challenge, and I'll just be very specific about this, is we serve everybody in the community. I think the concern though is with a bike, an e-bike, and I'm not being sarcastic when I say this, I can ride it anywhere, I can ride it down Main Street of Westminster. I can't ride my horse down Main Street. Now, I realize some's argument would be, well, you should have the correct property if you're going to own a horse. But there's a lot of people that ride horses that don't have the property, whether they go to someone else's property and ride, you know, maintain their horse there and so forth. So to me, I kind of follow a little bit on both Commissioner Kyler and Commissioner Vigliotti's, but I kind of would like to see at least some allowance for the horse community at this point within some of our trails. I know obviously, we're looking at additional property. We've got the property up towards Littlestown, which I think would be a viable location in the future. I realize that's the word "future" there, but I just, I'm not certain I really want to go 100% yet. Now, I do like the idea you mentioned of widening those turns, which makes it better. I think that's significant. But like, you know, like we've said, it doesn't matter if it's animals, it's people, things do happen at times. But for me, I kind of would like to have a little bit of a balance to it. Thank you.
Anything else?
Yes, thank you. I'll just, did you, did you have any?
No, go ahead.
All right. So I think it's unfortunate that this entire issue or debate, however you want to phrase it, has been now focused on the horseback riding trails. As Commissioner Gordon mentioned, you can ride an e-bike now, right now, virtually anywhere. That same thing cannot be said for the equestrian community. Equestrian community in this county has existed, I think it's probably fair to say, existed since 1837, when the county was officially established. I mean, that was the only way to get around, so maybe that's a technical point, but it is the truth. E-bikes, however, have been around for kind of a minute, really, in relation to that timeframe. So why we would want to make any changes to that right now is something I have a hard time understanding. I'm also concerned that whatever does come out of this particular ordinance, if it's voted on, is the fact that we, we're talking about a lot of heavy lifting for the Department of Parks and Recreation, things that you cannot control, even though you can try to. Because unfortunately, I mean, we are in a society today where, you know, you've got groups of people that kind of build things up and invest their time and effort, and then you've got groups of people that just simply don't care about that. They're there, they're living in the moment, they couldn't care less. Now, what I'd like to see is that we make no change to this ordinance, but then immediately have a discussion about creating a working group of e-bike people in the county, in addition to some of the leaders of the equestrian community, and try to figure out something that looks a little bit maybe what you discussed, Commissioner Vigliotti, or something that we can come up with, a little bit more concrete plan, if you will. Not one that involves PR or the hope that people are going to adhere to whatever rules or design, because we don't really have a way to enforce it. We just don't. So I'd like to see us make no change to this ordinance, and then find a way to make this happen, and I think that's the right way to go forward. And that protects everybody, and I think that it gives the e-bike community in this county an opportunity to let us know what's going to work for them. Because, you know, they were here a couple of weeks ago, and they seem like a pretty responsible group of people that wanted to do the right thing, so let's give them an opportunity to tell us what that looks like. And who knows? If we decide at some point we want to set aside infrastructure or trails, whatever you have it, within our park system for this particular use, where people, by the way, have to pay to get in to do it, then that's fine too. So I would like to see us vote no on any change, and then immediately, for the purpose of doing exactly the right thing or the best thing we can do, create a working group. I know that is a word that a lot of us, we hear "working group" and we think, a working group, a lot of times, they just don't work. But I think if we're very, if we're very focused on literally trying to figure out what within the e-bike community would work for them in the short term, it might be a good step in the right direction. So I'm certainly a no on this, and I would just, I would just, I would just ask that maybe we consider that option. Because we can still get to the right answer without making a decision right now, because I kind of feel like this whole discussion, it just didn't start out real right for me. I didn't feel like I had a lot of information. I feel like it's inherent upon the staff, this is not, this is not pointing out the Parks and Rec, but you know, if you come to us with these type of things, you should, you can't decide the solution for us. That's our job. That's why we're sitting up here. But we've got to come with a little bit more background information and a little bit more of the facts, so we can try to make a better decision. And I think any decision we make today is just premature.
So Commissioner, your idea of, say, a work group, do you have something in mind similar to the solar work group, where it would meet over so many months? Or do you think that maybe one gathering or like a, like a single workshop meeting between bikers and, excuse me, between cyclists and equestrians would be sufficient?
So the solar working group, there was a lot of county oversight on that group, and I don't think that would be necessarily the case for this. I would literally like to hear from representatives in the e-bike community what works for them and what they're willing to compromise on, and maybe that's a good starting point. I don't have all the answers, I haven't thought about it too much, but it seems like a good step forward. And if that doesn't work out, and we, actually, we kind of saw that with the solar working group, we didn't really come to a conclusion that I thought we all found would work, then maybe we revisit this and we move forward with the change. So I don't have all the answers of the structure, but it seems perfectly reasonable to me just to ask that community, well, what would work for you? And again, and the backdrop being, we're not banning e-bikes in the county, you can still ride them just about anywhere. But to Commissioner Gordon's point, you can't do that with a horse.
So, are you done?
Yes, sir.
Couple of things. You mentioned mountain bikes are allowed on the trails where the horses are.
Correct.
I didn't know what an e-bike was, to be honest, until today, this morning, when I got on one, and I also started talking to people. You know, the comments that were made a couple of weeks ago about people on e-bikes wearing ear pods and things like that and being, you know, inappropriate riding, I'm like, well, yeah, mountain bikers that are, you know, in their teens and twenties that feel like they bend and don't break can do that. And I used to be that type, where I would ride hard. I don't ride hard anymore. I'm broken, you know? I, you know, I can't run, I got to figure out what's going on with my hip, I mentioned. I got on that e-bike and I was like, boy, this feels great, you know, it's just, it's smooth. And then they said that the motor was working, I'm like, I didn't hear anything, you know? And it would allow me to, if, if, mountain bikes are already allowed, you know, on these trails, there's no difference with the z-bike, it can't go above 20 miles per hour with the motor, you know, the motor would shut off. So if somebody is going on a trail downhill above 20, there's no motor, and it would be kicking up rocks and it'd be louder anyway. These e-bikes are expensive. The general community overall, it sounds like, are those with disposable money that are typically your, you know, 30s, 40s and up, you know, community. A lot of them being much more senior, because it allows them to get out and do the things they want to do that they couldn't do before. And that is going on to the trails. Runners, I imagine, are also allowed on the trails. And like I said, I used to run, and, you know, coming up against horses, you know, when you're running, you're kicking things up, and you can startle horses just as fast, if not faster, by running. You know, I rode my daughter's horse, I don't know, about a month ago on a trail, and kind of like what Commissioner Kyler said, I mean, you got to be in control. And it wasn't just me on the trail, there was others. I felt very comfortable, maybe because he's an old horse, I don't know. But I'm like, to me, an e-bike is no different than a mountain bike, and is no different than a runner and other uses on a trail. We already have in here, if we approve this, designate trails, so that would be on you. I do not want to dictate this trail or that trail. I mean, that's why we, you know, like we said, we pay you to do things, you know, to staff appropriately and do what's necessary. So I'm not, I'm not sure why this is really an issue. I don't even know, I mean, an e-bike to me is no different than a mountain bike. And I don't know, unless somebody can tell me it is, you know, that Class 3 one or whatever it's called, that's different, you know? That's an 80-pound bike that has a throttle and, you know, but this is, it's a mountain bike. It looks like a mountain bike, it felt like a mountain bike, I rode it this morning, I was like, it was a mountain bike, and it just allowed, you know, while I was pedaling, the motor to engage, which was ultra-quiet, and it had brakes, it had, you know, a gear shift, just like a mountain bike. So I just, I don't even know why it's an issue, to be honest. And I don't think we need to over-study this. You know, I think we should do it, and yes, if we make a mistake, then we should revisit it, but if mountain bikes are allowed, then these should be allowed. If we over-study this, then I would say, take mountain bikes off, take runners off, take everything off except for horses. Because anything that can startle a horse, you know, should not be allowed if we're not allowing this. Again, this thought of, I don't know, at first, the way these equestrian riders, horseback riders came in, which were a lot from Pennsylvania, because they come down to use the trails, which is great, it's great that we get community outside of Maryland coming in, outside Carroll County. But the way they were describing it was like these reckless, you know, mountain bikers, you know, using recklessly these e-bikes. And it sounds like these e-bikes are used by people like me, who is, you know, 60 this year, and those that want to be enabled to do things. Sure, I could ride it on a street, but if I want to go into a park on a trailhead, you know, I should be able to do that. And if I can't do it with a mountain bike, which I would have a tough time right now, if I could afford an e-bike, you know, because it sounds like they were expensive. I had, I had no idea. So...
And you know, Commissioner, to your point, and it's interesting you say that, because I, you know, I also tried riding one of the e-bikes this morning during the demonstration. And, you know, having ridden, you know, like a regular bike in the past, if I'm, you know, even if I'm like in a neighborhood somewhere and I'm making a turn, I'm not going to, you know, speed around that turn. So I couldn't imagine doing something like that on a very, on a narrower trail than, like a wide-open street. And so I certainly, you know, respect that and appreciate that, you know, point of view on it. And, you know, they really are effortless, I didn't hear any sound. And so I guess maybe, my other thought would be then, you know, if we are maybe heading more in the direction of letting, you know, staff determine where on these trails would be appropriate, maybe then the only thing that I would request or suggest is that the one trail in Gillis Falls, or that maybe that system we just, you know, leave off as it is, because that's where the Equestrian Center is located. And if the equestrians are truly concerned about e-bikes on the trails, they'll at least have one where they're not going to encounter the e-bikes, and that'll be the trail that's, that goes around the Equestrian Center.
But I would make it not available for mountain bikes either then. An e-bike's no different than a mountain bike, is my understanding. An e-bike Class 1 is no different than a mountain bike.
Technically, no. And the original reason why this was brought before you was because, and you said it, there is a motor on this. The original ordinance says no motorized vehicles. And what we were seeing was, we had these motorized vehicles coming out there.
Right.
And people were disobeying the ordinance. So to clarify things, Jeff and I decided that we needed to come here to get clarity within our ordinance, so that we weren't forcing people to break that ordinance.
Right.
Because it was already happening, and we needed to get to a point where we could say, the Class 1 is okay, but we don't want to see the Class 2 and 3, because there you have the throttle, and you have the motor doing the work for the individual, not assisting the individual.
And this is a, it's a battery. I didn't even know that. I mean, you know, so it's not even like really a motor, it's a battery in the, in the sleeve of the bike, in the frame of the bike.
Right.
So, like I said, if I would have, if I would have heard something, if I would have felt something other than being on a mountain bike, it'd be one thing. But if we don't allow these, on these trails, then we should not allow mountain bikes on trails. And I don't agree with that. So, and I would even go further, because I've seen people startle horses just by running, like somebody say, kicking up dirt. And, you know, common courtesy on trails goes a long ways. And like you said, educate, I think videos are great ideas to, to, to do, and we should be proud of them. But yeah, I, if we don't allow e-bikes, I don't understand why we allow other things, so.
That's a, that's a fair point. That's a fair point.
And I'd like to make one more comment and semi-ask a question, because you almost answered it already. The more the two of you have talked, the more I see why you came and asked for this. And, and that shows me, you're willing to regulate it. And when you talked about the other areas of the country, the other areas of the state, I think it's already been evaluated, how these are... And when you talked about the other areas of the country, the other areas of the state, um, I think it's already been evaluated how these are. And secondly, um, I semi trust you that if there's an issue at XYZ Trail, you're gonna change the rules. You're gonna, you know, you can go to mountain bikes now and say, I'm sorry, if we have one more problem, we're gonna close this trail to bikes. Or, you know, you're gonna enforce some stuff. And then lastly, for us, we've all mentioned, uh, you know, we're complaint driven. If we get a complaint about any trail and something going on with a horse or a bike or a runner, we're gonna bug you guys to address the complaint. And I think that's our hammer moving forward to make sure this all works. Now, my question was, and you kind of answered it, um, the existing rules. So if I go out with an e-bike, I'm breaking the rule.
Correct.
If I go out with a dirt bike, I'm breaking the rule. Now, education-wise, clarification-wise, you want to say, an e-bike's okay, the dirt bike isn't.
Correct.
And and I assume that's why you asked this. In other words, I I guess my question is, does this give you more teeth to enforce stuff on the trails than you had before? And is that what you're looking for?
I don't think it's gonna make it easier for us to enforce. They're already there. They're not going away. And I think this is a a way to address that. Um, I don't know if you guys remember the the one gentleman speaking who said, you know, he 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 lost all that weight. Um, and it's because he was able to get out on the trails and and use his bike. He's he approached me in the hallway. He's like, what do I do? I don't want to break the ordinance. I don't want to be breaking the rules, the laws. Um, so we have people like that that want to obey the ordinance and we have those that don't. And, you know, the ordinance really is not going to stop the ones who are breaking the rules. We have dirt bikes out at the Gillis Falls area going across our equestrian center. We can't stop them. We don't have the ability to to catch them, stop them, or en- enforce those rules. So as um it would, you know, Jeff had once mentioned, it's it's self-regulated. You know, we're we're relying on the community to follow the ordinance. Because we don't have park rangers out there. We don't have people on the trails, staff on the trails to be able to enforce that.
And that's, and that's why I said I semi trust you for doing this because you don't have the people out there to enforce it on every trail all the time, you know? I think you have the intention.
And I don't think we'd ever be able to be out there all the time to enforce it. Um, and I do think Morgan Run.
Morgan Run is state.
State, it's in.
And they have rangers that do go out there periodically. Um, but like with any state park, and I came from a state park system where we had rangers, they can't be everywhere at at any given point of time. So things still happen within a park that is regulated by a ranger system. So the big issue we have is we have all of those things happening in our parks. We try and address them as best that we can. Um, we involve law enforcement when needed. Uh, but, you know, it only goes that far. So, and we have, you know, it's not the totally the same.
You can't be everywhere.
But it's just like dogs off the leash. We have the same issue within our parks. So.
And that's a good point because I thought about that, talking about uh controlling horses, you know, what percentage don't control their dogs?
Correct.
And and people look at some of these ordinance and they're like, it it doesn't apply to me. My dog isn't isn't vicious. It's not going to attack anybody.
So it seems to me that e-bikes are already in common usage on the trails. All of the trails, including uh and and beyond e-bikes, there are certain uh uh recreational implements, we'll call them, that are also in use, but they're not allowed. And I certainly take Commissioner Rothstein's argument. I think it's a good argument that if you allow the one, you certainly cannot deny the other. Um, how do you feel? I guess maybe that would negate the argument itself of a trial period because having the one would necessitate the other.
Yeah, I just don't think that that e-bike class one or level one is any different than a um a trail bike, a bicycle, you know, uh, whatever you call it.
How much does, how much does a regu- like a standard bike cost these days, like a regular bicycle?
You could go to Dick's and get one for $200, or you could buy one for $10,000 or more.
So if I'm cruising around, and I guess maybe that's something else that's, you know, weighing or not weighing on me, but but, you know, certainly around my mind, if I have a $4,000 or $5,000 e-bike, I'm gonna go out of my way not to wreck it.
Right.
Or to do something reckless.
E- e- exactly. It it sounds like they're more safe focused, safety focused on trails than if there was a, you know, a regular bike. I mean, again, a regular bike is a younger generation that is gonna be more aggressive on trails. I mean, at least that's the way I was. Um, e-bikes are an older generation, like Mr. Burke, that would be not as reckless on trails. Um, so, I mean, that's kind of the way I see it. I mean, it's, and there's no difference between the bicycle and the e-bike, except for the rider, that, you know, um, the demographics of the riders. So I'd be more concerned with the craziness on the trails than I would be of the e-bikes. And like I said, I've I've been around horses when I'm running and and dogs off-leash. When you're on a horse, that ain't a, you know, that's not a good match, you know? Um, and it happens. So, I mean, I I don't want to belabor this, and we are. Um, I I think we should move forward and I think we should focus on educating the public and the trail etiquette focus. I think you should have that responsibility regarding designate the trails, you know, because you know them best. Um, and I I like the widening of certain areas uh for line of sight. Um, you know, a lot, you know, but I I also know that that's expensive and resource, you know, takes a lot of resources to do.
I do apologize. We had to let Brad take vacation, so he wasn't able to be here when we were in front of you on the 26th. So a lot of these questions probably could have been answered then.
It's all good.
And and I tell you, and like I said, your 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 discussions, it made me more comfortable than I was when we started. And and Commissioner Vigil, I understand your thoughts of a trial basis or limiting trails. My humble opinion, you've been doing that for, you've had a trial period for whatever, 25, 30 years. Um, we're just giving you a little bit more of a better tool to enforce this. And and I, you know, I think they've been doing their stuff. Most of the uh complaints, examples, we were told um at the at the last public comment, had nothing whatsoever to do with bikes.
No.
You know, and stuff happens, you know, where if you're riding a horse, stuff happens. And uh, so I, again, I I agree. I I think we ought to move forward with this and uh and like anything else, if we get too many complaints, then we're gonna be bugging you. And if we don't, you know, go for it. Make it work.
Well, I'd like to offer a motion then, that we amend the Carroll County Code of Ordinances, Chapter 94, Section 94, uh, Point 033, to allow usage of Class One e-bikes on designated trails and county parks, and to expand efforts to educate trail users about trail etiquette.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and second. Is there any more discussion on this? Seen here, none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Against?
No.
What were you telling?
No.
No?
No.
Okay, 3-2. Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much.
Okay, let's talk about the 2022 Planning Annual Report. Ladies.
Good morning to you both.
Good morning.
Tiffany, you still um tied into the FDC?
Yes.
Okay. Do you monitor their social media?
I do not.
Okay. I know we don't want to get engaged with the social media, but um.
But we don't really have a way to monitor it because we don't have a Facebook page and planning, um, for a number of reasons we could talk about later, but um.
Or maybe just engage it through uh the Carroll County government page, because there's.
Could talk to Chris about Swam about that.
There's some really good points that were made, and I know we're gonna get into this, but one point that was made, and um they reached out to me was um, they didn't know that Linda had left. And Linda did a lot of work in the Freedom Area. Now, it was very interesting because they were praising her on such commitment into the community. And it would have been nice to have known, we don't do press releases uh when people leave, or we don't do press releases when people retire. But she had a pivotal role, an important role, um, that had a lot to do with the Freedom District. Um, so it may be something to look at for press releases or announcements when key players are leaving because we have had some significant director turnover overall, but I'm just.
Excuse me, Commissioner?
Yes?
We did, we did do a post uh thanking her for her years of service for us with pictures.
We we did a post on the um social media.
Yes, we did.
Yeah. No, no, thanks. I I was asked if there was a press release, and there wasn't, but thanks. Um, but that's also good to know, and I can point people in that direction. I'm just thinking of ideas of how to continue the strong communications, you know, with them. Uh, so, okay, and we can talk more about that. That's not the purpose of this, but I did want to bring that up.
We could talk more about it.
Yeah, okay, thanks.
Um, but what we're here today for is to present to you the Planning Annual Reports for 2022. This report is required by the Land Use Article. Um, each year, planning staff works with other county staff as well as the towns to prepare this report, which is basically a summary of development and planning activity for the previous calendar year. And it is certified, I guess is the proper word, by the Planning Commission and sent on to the state by July 1st. So we're here today to present to you what happened in planning and development in Carroll County in 2022.
Okay, and that was most of my first lines.
Sorry, so skip to slide two.
Absolutely, fine. Thank you. Okay, so, um, following the certification letter by the Planning Commission, the table of contents and the acknowledgements and introductions, we start with an at-a-glance look on Page Two for development in the county uh for 2022, and that does include municipalities as well. And that is basically a snapshot of the report, uh, the detailed report that follows. And then to start the report, we start um with the new plans and plan amendments on Pages Three through 13. There were no new plans in 2022, but there were several amendments to the Carroll County Water and Sewer Master Plan that became effective in 2022. Those are listed on Pages Three and Four of the report, and those are shown in Maps One through Nine in the report. Next, Pages 14 through 18 show site plans and subdivisions approved. There were 30 lots, 158 units, and 202.7 acres of approved residential development in the county, and that does include municipalities, as well as 215.18 acres of non-residential development in the county. And those are listed on Tables One through Four and shown on Map 10.
Okay, I apologize because you're directing us to using
Yes.
this, okay, which we all were, you know, asked to bring, and so we are using this.
Yes.
For the community, um, as you're telling us to look at this, this plan report is available or will be available?
Well, it's online.
It is currently online.
Okay.
We we haven't been printing as much anymore, just in general. We get fewer requests, but we probably will print a small amount if somebody really wanted them. And then Tiffany also sends a copy to each of the towns.
Okay, so it's online. Probably a good place to uh print a copy or two is in the library for reference, you know? So if people would know, hey, this is where.
If they don't go online, how do they request a copy?
They can contact our department and we can get them a copy. Absolutely.
Yeah, it's just, you're you're showing us slides which everybody can see.
Yeah.
But you're referencing this that nobody's seeing except for us, which I appreciate, but I want to make sure the community has this as well, so.
I apologize. Um, it was a little lo- longer. Um, Commissioner Gordon's probably aware at the Planning Commission meeting, but we did go a little uh more into the summarizing it and tightening it up for this, so it was a little less than. So it was a little, yes, I understand that. I apologize for that.
Thanks.
Thank you. And let's go find my place again. So not included in the report is the um 10-year trend that we include into the presentation here that shows in this particular slide, the residential development by number of lots over the last 10 years since um 2013. It does not include the municipalities, and it shows that in 2022, we had 27 number of lots approved.
And if you want to, a little slower on that, if anybody has any questions about these summary graphs or anything.
Next, we have the non-residential development 10-year trend shown by acres in this case. And there were 182 approved for the county in 2022. And it shows a general um pretty uh pretty steady trend over the last several years.
Getting a lot of comments from the community how we are growing and continuing to grow. These are showing us with these trends that we're not growing. Is that correct? I mean, the residential lots and, you know, I mean, at 27, um, we're not at the lowest point, but we're not very large. I mean, that's countywide.
And those are approved. That's not developed.
Right.
Yes.
So it's it's modest growth, not rapid growth, is what we're looking at.
I would call it steady growth.
Yeah.
Rather than even modest growth. But there's some indicators coming up that Tiffany will present that'll show a little different aspect of it.
Okay, great, thanks.
With the uh, the the number for 2014 is substantially larger, what was the, oh, one more, you can go forward one more.
Um, we had looked at that previously, um, and it just looked like it was an anomaly for a couple of years. Sometimes when um there's development approved, it doesn't get into like maybe the beginning of the next year, and it looks a lot higher than it actually was.
The next slide.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
For that one.
On that slide.
Oh, what was that one? I don't remember that one. I, from last year, I looked that up. Um, it was just an anomaly.
It was an anomaly.
It definitely sticks out.
It does. In two years, it won't even be there.
Not to pay too much attention if it's a one-year blip like that, because it it could be something strange like that.
Next, uh, on Pages 19 through 21, we report the um zoning map amendments. And, let me get there. Those include Tables Five and Six that show that there was, there were five annexations and four rezonings in the county in 2022, and those are shown on Map 11 on Page 21. Next, we'll go through Pages 22 through 30 and start with the zoning text amendments on Pages 22 through 24. Start with county revisions made in seven local ordinances affecting future development, included um Chapter 158 zoning chapter and Chapter 155 development and subdivision of land. As you can see, there were several there, and those are included on 22 and 23. And then um zoning, next would be the zoning text amendments for the municipalities, as well as amendments to PFA boundaries or priority funding area boundaries, new schools, transportation, um adequate public facility ordinances, and park facilities. Um, so here you see the seven uh ordinances for the zoning text amendment revised local ordinances affecting future development, seven for the county and several for other municipalities there. There were no changes to priority funding area boundaries, and the school changes included the 800, I'm sorry, 89,690 square foot Carroll County Career and Tech Center that was constructed and opened last year. The roads are listed in Table Seven on 26 to 27, and that mostly shows that those were system maintenance and local in nature. There were no changes to the, to anyone's adequate public facility ordinances, and there were several changes that were made um to parks within the county. Um, those are listed on 27 and 28. those are listed on 27 and 28, and shown on 28, 29, and 30 in the report. Next, we'll skip ahead to pages 38 through 39 that show the building permits issued in the county in 2022. On those, um, in, on those, it shows on table 16 that there was a total of 418 building permits issued in the county, and this graph here shows that mostly those were residential in nature and inside the growth area, and they're shown on map 13 on page 39. Next is the new use and occupancy certificates issued, or the UNOs. On table 17, they're listed by election district and municipality and includes all use and occupancy certificates issued, including improvement instruction, uh, construction, and then, and table 18 shows the new construction, and that there were a total of 578 UNOs issued last year, and most of those were residential in nature and inside the growth area. Map 14 shows all 578 dots and representing those UNOs by residential and non-residential, and it just have this on this particular slide showing that even though it might not look like seven, 578 dots, there are there, they're just often there right on top of each other. Again, not included in the report, but just in the presentation here, the 10-year trend for residential use and occupancy certificates countywide, and that is just the residential, so that's the 528, it's 523, and the trend over the years, and it has gone up a little bit. And then this is the non-residential trend over the last 10 years with a spike that we can't yet determine what that was about. We looked into it, we couldn't really figure it out. Um, we have some speculation that possibly 2021 was so low that it kind of made up for that. We'll see how it turns out in the next couple of years. Next, on pages 44 through 48, we report the development capacity analysis, or also known as the Buildable Land Inventory, or BLI, that shows the existing and potential development in the county. Tables 2021 and 22 show the existing and potential development for residential. Inside the growth area, it shows that there's 8,320 potential developable residential lots, and potential for 10,612 residential lots outside of the growth area.
And remember, this is municipalities as well. This isn't, we're not talking about the freedom growth area, we're talking about all growth areas.
Thank you, Mary. And those are shown on map 15 on page 46 for the residential. Following that, we have tables 23 and 24 that show, that are included in the existing and potential non-residential development for the county, including the municipalities, and those tables show that there are 2,856 develop, potential developable acres inside the growth area for non-residential development, and 680 non-residential development acres potentially outside the growth area. And those are mapped on pages, on, um, map 16 on page 48. Next, pages 49 through 50 show the agricultural land preservation. Total of 892 acres and 14 farms were put into ag preservation in 2022, and that was for $7,067,112 for FY22. 59% of those were county funds, and that brought us to 77.5% of the 100,000 acre goal for the county, and those are shown in map 17 on page 50. And then, again, for, um, just some trends that are not in the report, but just here in the presentation, this is the ag land preservation trend over the last five years by acres. And one more that we've included here that is not in the report, and this is just showing the, um, from 2018 to 2022, acres that were by ag pres, put into ag pres is the dark blue, approved residential development by acres is the light teal here, and approved non-residential development is in the darker teal here. So all eight municipalities have certified their information before sending it to the county, that's included in the appendix of the report. County Planning Commission did certify the report on July 20th, and the report was emailed, the final report was emailed to the Maryland Department of Planning and all the municipalities on June 23rd, and it has been posted on Planning's website. Next, we'll be distributing hard copies to all the municipalities and I guess to the, to the lib, to libraries as well.
I think that's a good idea. This is a great report, as always.
Thank you.
Any, uh, questions, comments?
The only, thank you, by the way. The, the only question I have is when you go back to the use and occupancy trend on slide 14 for residential, I guess I just, I'm trying to make sense of those numbers, that's almost 500 use and occupancy certificates, which to me is, you know, here are the keys, you know, congratulations, you're moving in, but all the other trends are in the hundreds and two hundreds, so I'm trying to make sense of those numbers. It looks like we haven't had nearly that much residential development, but then we're looking at these numbers for use and occupancy. Why, I might not be understanding.
No, you probably do. There were several, um, I believe Tonti Town had, uh, huge development over the last couple of years.
Tonti Town?
Tonti Town did have a huge development over the last couple of years that, um, and we have somebody in the department who has been looking at the trend this year, just kinda keeping us up on it, and she has said that it is significantly lower this year, and probably because it was built out in, in Tonti Town. I am only assuming, we'll know more next year when we.
That makes sense. I think your reasoning for a couple of these trends makes sense. It's if it's low, then people, you know, you bounce back, you make up for it, it's all market related, so.
Some of it's related to when the year ends, so if, like, for the legislation, for instance, it looks like there was a lot of legislation in 2022, because some of the comp rezoning legislation became effective like on January 6th of that year, and then some of it became effective December of that year, so it looked like it all happened that year, but it's all when the cutoff is to counting things, so some of it's that.
Okay, thank you.
So I noticed that with the PowerPoint presentation, there were certain pieces of information that were in the PowerPoint that did not seem to be in the report itself. Uh, will the PowerPoint be available for the public as well as the?
We could post that, sure.
Because I noticed that, you know, some of the slides, I was trying to, to match up what was on the screen with what was in the report, and there wasn't the same. So, so, uh, I don't know whether or not in the future, maybe just, uh, amending the PowerPoint at the end of the report when that goes out to the public.
We could do that.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Any other questions?
Info.
Appreciate it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, let's talk about electronic monitoring system, Sheriff's Office.
Morning, everybody.
Morning.
Good morning.
The Office of Procurement in cooperation with the Carroll County Sheriff's Office and the Detention Center requests your approval to award the electronic, uh, monitoring system for the Detention Center's Home Detention Work Release Program to BI Incorporated in the annual amount of $263,150. BI Incorporated was awarded an Omnia Partners contract with this, which the City of Mesa, Arizona competitively bid. This contract is effective through May 3rd, 2027, with renewals available to extend until May 3rd, 2029. This amount was approved in the fiscal year 24 budget, and no other fund should be necessary.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Morning.
So just a little more information for you on this. Um, this is a current contract, we currently use this vendor, so we're renewing the contract, um, it's at that point in time. The, the purpose of this contract, you see the electronic monitoring, so it is for the pre-trial, the offender diversion unit, um, so currently those devices are typically court ordered, and that's the unit that monitors and manages all of those people and those devices, so we're just doing the renewal.
Okay.
Any questions?
Motion to approve the electronic monitoring system to BI Incorporated in the amount of $263,150.
Second. Motion second, any discussion? Seeing here none at all in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
A general, a general question that, that didn't make a difference in my vote. The monitors, you guys monitor home, somebody gets sent to health department facility, if they're under your jurisdiction, you, you monitor a lot of locations, right?
So, well, this is particularly, um, addressing people, so whether it's survivors or DCS.
Yeah, that's what, yeah.
Depending, um, and it's court ordered, depending where they're assigned, so to speak.
Yes.
So they could be decided.
If I were in your detention center, and I got moved to a Sykesville facility, I would have a monitor when I left your center if I'm still under your control?
Not necessarily, if you're in.
Or not, maybe.
This is court ordered when you're not.
Okay, gotcha.
This is the alternative program that the pre-trial services monitors.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, let's talk about payroll HR management system, uh, change order request. How much I love change orders.
There's a lot of us.
So you guys all work together, huh?
We try.
They're all very, they're all very summery and festive looking today.
I tell ya.
We're all up here navy blue.
I want you to miss us. At least I didn't.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Morning.
Um, the Carroll County Comptroller's Office entered a contract with PDS Professional Services to provide consulting services for our human resources payroll system known as Vista. The board concurred in August of 2015 to award this contract in the amount of $380,000. Since that time, change orders have been issued in the amount of $54,960, and the newest change order has been issued for an additional $19,500, which exceeds the 10% of the original contract, and per resolution, delegation of authority requires the board approval to spend these additional funds, and these funds were approved in the FY23 budget. So I'll let Jenny and Christie take over if you have any questions about the, um, system itself.
So I'll just give you a little background. Um, in 2015, the payroll systems was started, there's two pieces to it. One is VTI, which is our time and attendance piece, where employees can punch in, punch out, tracks the time, and then there's a second piece that we are working on, um, all three of our departments are working together to get, is the Vista piece, which is, encompasses the HR part and brings all of that in so that we can eventually roll out a, um, platform that employees will be able to use and get their direct deposit advices online instead of us having to give you paper, uh, time cards. In addition, there's other things of, and of coming down the road of employee deductions and being able to go in and self-service portals and things like that. Um, in the meantime, we've been working through this process, and there's parts of Vista that have gone live already with the Fire EMS and the recruiting side, so we do have that. VTI is al- already implemented in the live. Um, these requests today are to approve the spending of additional funds in PDS, which is the company that is headquartered in Blue Bell, PA, um, to allow staff to implement additional changes, and these additional changes were, um, made with the adoption of chapter 36 and 37, which are the, and 37 is the Fire and EMS, and, um, the amount is within the project budget, no additional funds will be needed, and the possibility does exist that additional purchases will need to be made to support this project. However, there is sufficient funding in the budget to cover those costs.
So it's not that we are, so it's not that there is a change in the scope of services, but the amount of services that are required because of the inclusion of the Department of Fire and EMS now?
Correct. There's been a lot, um, because of including that, back in 2015, we didn't have that, and with the change of, I will, there's a couple of things between grants, addition of grants and us having to maintain time and effort and allocations, and then addition of Fire EMS, that wasn't anticipated in 2015, so these are more customizing the system to work for us.
Gotcha.
Okay. Any other questions?
Motion to approve the spending of an additional $19,500 to PDS Professional Services for the continued consulting services for the Vista system.
Second.
Motion second, any discussions? Seeing here none at all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, let's talk about contract renewal, on-call solid waste engineering services for FY23. And then for FY24.
Yes, we do have two very similar actions to bring before you, and the first we're bringing up is FY23. Um, the Northeast Maryland Waste Disposal Authority solicited proposals for the contractors in the field of solid waste and the environmental field, which includes to provide on-call solid waste engineering services on an as-needed or indefinite delivery basis. The Bureau of Solid Waste engaged Stearns, Conrad, and Schmidt Consulting Engineers Incorporated through the above-mentioned contract to perform tasks at the Northern Landfill, Hoods Mill Landfill, and the John Owings Landfill during the fiscal year of 2023 at a cost of $137,000. These funds were approved in the FY23 budget, and I'll turn it over to Cliff and Eric to answer any questions you might have about the Northeast Maryland Waste Disposal Authority approval.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Morning.
This will cover both of the 23 and the 24. Uh, just for some background, uh, for a period of about five years, the county held our own on-call engineering contracts. Uh, we went that route, you know, basically as a, uh, kind of a cost comparison to contracts that were held before. We did use, we did go through the authority years ago, that was one of my predecessors, uh, put that in place. Uh, as that five-year contract came to an end, we had five on-call engineers. As that came to an end, the Northeast Authority redid their on-call engineering contract, and they brought on 12 engineering firms, including the ones, and this, this is just one case, including one that we were using for our landfill gas at our three facilities. So in order to not duplicate effort, pricing was identical, we said, we're gonna roll this over our contract, because ours came to an end, into the authority's contract. Uh, the reason it's fiscal 23 is because logistically it happened, I think it was after Mike left, and Maureen has corrected me in the procedures going forward, thank you. Uh, so this is a little bit of a mea culpa one for fiscal 23. Uh, fiscal 24, which we'll discuss next, is going forward. Uh, these funds are approved, uh, through the fiscal 23 and the fiscal 24 budget. Uh, it covers all the work that's required today by the state, uh, for us to monitor and maintain the landfill gas systems at Hoods Mill, John Owings, and at Northern Landfill.
Okay. So we need to take them one at a time? First is FY23, and then the second, just run right into FY24?
Yes, please.
Dollar amounts are very similar for each, I mean, why is there a difference? I mean?
In the dollar amount?
Yeah.
Uh, cost of, or not cost of living, but a, a increase in, uh, CPI, one year to the next. There's a little bit of difference in the, uh, in the scope of work, but not much, that was just to address some, some minor changes by the state.
Okay.
Motion to approve the Bureau of Solid Waste to continue to use the services of SCS to complete the tasks begun in FY23 for on-call solid waste engineering services related to landfill gas system operations, maintenance, and monitoring at Northern, Hoods Mill, and John Owings Landfills.
Second.
Motion got a second, discussion, seeing here none at all in favor?
Aye.
And we'll just go right into FY24.
Okay, and again, it's, it's basically all the. Okay. And again, it's basically all the same information, other than we are looking at fiscal year 2024 at a cost of $142,976.22. And again, these funds were approved in the FY '24 budget. So we just need your approval for that.
Okay. Motion to approve the Bureau of Solid Waste to utilize the services of SCS to complete the tasks in fiscal year '24 for on-call, on-call solid waste engineering services related to landfill gas system operations, maintenance, and monitoring in Northern, Hoods Mill, and John Owings Landfills.
Second.
Motion second, discussion. Seeing here none at all in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, commissioners.
Okay, let's talk about the on-call user support and housing, hosting services for the City Works Asset Management Solutions. Okay, enlighten us.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Commissioners, we're here today to request your approval to award an extension of the current agreement to EA Engineering for the City Works on-call user support and hosting services software, and the, and award the approval of the current request for the FY ' '24 services in an amount not to exceed $44,300. The reason this is an amount to exceed is this is comprised of three different fees, which two of them are actual hard costs. One is the City Works hosting services for $7,200. The GIS hosting services, which is $12,200. And the on-call user support services will be an amount not to exceed up to $24,900. That will be billed on an as-needed basis. The other award that we're asking for is to extend for an additional year and to allow for additional four or one-year renewal options to the existing agreement.
Gentlemen, the Bureau currently uses the City Works Asset Management System in two primary ways. First, all of the Bureau assets are placed in a database so that the City Works, so City Works software may function as a complete database asset management system and mapping system. Secondly, the asset data allows City Works to operate as our work order system. And as Kerry said, we have three major tasks that EA presently does for us. One is they host the City Works platform and our asset and user history data on their network. They also host the GIS database and then provide data updates on a weekly basis, which primarily allows third-party access for Miss Utility Locate Mapping Services. So we use a third-party vendor for Miss Utility Locates for the water and sewer system. And then, thirdly, they do provide on-call or support services and training on an as-needed basis, primarily if we need forms updated or new features added to City Works and occasional staff training purposes. So.
Where do they come out of, EA Engineering?
They are based in northern Baltimore County.
Okay.
Sparks, I believe.
Sparks, okay. Okay, any questions?
Motion to award the extension of the contract for the on-call user support and hosting services for City Works Asset Management Solutions to EA Engineering for the fiscal year '24 services in the amount not to exceed $44,300.
Second.
Motion got a second. Discussion, seeing here none at all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, let's talk a little bit about tech services. Approval to purchase server, storage, backup, infrastructure, replacement. Gentlemen.
Morning.
Morning, commissioners.
Morning.
Morning again. The Office of Procurement in cooperation with the Department of Technology Services requests your approval for the server, storage, and backup infrastructure replacement purchase from E Plus Technology Incorporated in the amount of $1,497,283.92. This purchase is off of Maryland State Contract, Maryland Hardware 2012 Master Contract, which was competitively bid. This amount is approved in the fiscal year '24 budget, and no additional fund should be required.
Morning, commissioners.
I apologize. You said it was competitively bid?
Yes.
How many were, you know, part of that competitive bid?
I'm not 100% sure, but I can get you that information. It was a Maryland bid that went out.
Okay, okay.
Am I correct, Sixton? We looked at three different?
So in addition to that, you know, coming off of that Maryland contract, we did outside of that contract also get two additional quotes as well. So we have had three total quotes for this on our own.
I apologize. Go ahead.
That's okay. I'm going to let Mr. Sixton Candel tell you a little bit about the equipment that we're getting.
Okay. So, good morning, commissioners.
Morning.
Morning.
This request is for the replacement of our server, network, storage, and backup systems located both in our primary and secondary data centers. These systems comprise, you know, just under 100 servers, along with all of our network storage and all of our backup systems that serves every agency throughout the county. The current systems, both the backup system and the storage server system have reached the end of their life and end of support in the next few months. So, so we're asking for this project to incorporate both those at the same time, because they are so intertwined with each other. So, and then the new system, one of the features of the new system is there are options for cloud storage as well that come with this system, which will give us more options as we plan out disaster recovery scenarios. So it gives us more flexibility than we have today to help grow.
What do you do with the systems being replaced?
So those systems are no longer supported or sold by the vendor. So, I mean, we can, we can try to auction them off, but at the same time, from a cyber standpoint, there is a, you know, whether it's the best practice to sell something to somebody else that knowingly can't be supported and could potentially put them at risk.
You put sand in and make them into a paperweight or something?
Could do, yes.
You know, I wonder if maybe the Career and Tech Center might have a use or something like that. System may be out of date, but, I mean, was that plausible?
In a sandbox, kind of not connected to any outside network, yeah.
Yeah.
Something we could check into, right? See if they'd be interested, rather than just throwing it out.
Yeah. Are you familiar with sandbox? When, it's taking systems and you ensure that they're not connected to anything. So you don't open up any vulnerabilities. And it allows for the students to work on the systems. It's just, yeah, that may be, that may be a really cool idea.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll, we'll look into that as we move, you know, forward with the purchase.
That's really smart.
And commissioners, I would like to take a second to commend my staff on this. Originally, with this project, it is planned for this year, but in our original approach, we were actually going to look at doing it at the end of one fiscal period and the beginning of another. Because of the good work that they did and everything, because we're coming before you now, we are saving $280,000 on the cost of the system if we had taken and done it the other way that we were going to do. So working with the vendor, we saved a significant amount of money with this project.
Awesome. Okay.
Motion to approve the storage and backup infrastructure replacement purchase from E Plus Technology Incorporated in the amount of $1,497,283.92.
Second.
Motion second, any discussion? Seeing here none at all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Now let's talk about Genetek Advantage Support Renewal.
All right. The Office of Purchasing in cooperation with the Department of Technology Services is requesting your approval for the renewal of Genetek Advantage Support to Marathon Technology Solutions Incorporated. The cost is based on a number of devices connected to our Genetek system, and the cost for fiscal year '24 is $30,875.48. Marathon is an existing term contractor with Carroll County, and this amount is approved in the fiscal year '24 budget, and no additional fund should be required.
Sixten.
So for this request, this is our annual support renewal with Genetek that we've been, been renewing for several years now. This, again, is, as was already mentioned, is based on the number of devices connected. So, so that's how that amount changes from year to year. And this support contract is what gives us access to all the system updates, as well as tech support from Genetek, as well as engineering. We get eight hours of engineering time with them each year to help us work through bigger projects.
The term contract with Marathon, is that competitively bid?
It is, yes.
How often?
It was.
I think it's every three years.
Three years, yeah. And we will be coming up on that next year.
Okay. Just another good local small business in Carroll County. So, okay.
Motion to approve the renewal of Genetek Advantage Support to Marathon Technology Services Incorporated in the amount of $30,857.48.
Second.
I got a motion, I got a second, any discussion on this one? Seeing here none at all in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, commissioners.
I had a quick, oh, I had a quick, Commissioner, no, that's okay. Just had a quick ask of you, Mr. Rivers. So I guess just to lay the background, I mean, we get a lot of emails as commissioners, right? We get a lot of emails. People love what we do, people don't like what we do. A lot of them have to do with roads and fixing roads. But the issue of broadband in the county is probably in the top five. So with the consent of my fellow commissioners, I know you provide a technology services update, I think, every month or maybe every quarter to us.
That's, it's, it's now, the first one was this, is this month. I don't know if you've received it yet or not, but there is an update in there on broadband, and you will get that on a monthly basis.
And I appreciate that. And I had, I had had a discussion with Ms. Wyndham about that. So that's very helpful. But what I wanted to ask you to do, again, with the consent of my fellow commissioners, is just, if you could provide us, this is an important issue in the county, and people who are moving to the county don't really understand what their options are. If you could take that services report and just create a one-page document, you know, the different programs that are currently in function for broadband, maybe the past couple of years, the successes, what's currently ongoing, a lot of the things you're already addressing in that report. But I think a one-page document given to us every month, and again, if it could be broken down by district. The reason I say district is it's because it's the geographic feature that people will understand the most, if it's possible to do that. All I'm asking is that you take that into a, and the first one will be the most difficult, right? And then you're just updating numbers. I don't think there'd be room in there for a map or anything. I don't think we need that. But if you could provide us just directly with a one-page document each month to let us know how things are going, how these programs are, what they're accomplishing in the county, it would be greatly appreciated. Because it is a big issue, and I know you've got people working on it, and you're doing good work. And I think it's just all the better that we know what you're doing, and we can share that with people within the county.
I agree.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
I just, I agree with that completely. I think you guys are doing phenomenal work, and it would be nice to have that information when we do get questions about it.
So, we are doing that. We're also going to be working with the county administrator and deputy county administrator to come before you in the next couple of months and actually doing a presentation on where we are, having the maps here, so that the public will be able to see exactly what's happening. And we are at the end of a process where we're actually working on a rack card that's going to go out to the public, and we can talk more about that as well. That's going to allow them to give us, allow them to give us feedback on where they think high-speed broadband is for them and how it works and that type of thing. We have recently updated all of the webpages, both on economic development and on the county website, with the information on how to obtain that, how to go out and check who do you see you have for service and that. So we'll bring that back before you, and I will definitely get you that report on a monthly basis.
That would be very helpful, you know, sort of dashboard, if you will, because we, again, I know the county gets information through the website and other things, but we talk to a lot of people, too. And it's probably, we're in a really good position to be sharing that information as well.
And also, if you, if you do, I offer to you, we offered it to the previous board, as Commissioner Rothstein knows, if you have particular issues where the public is having a problem with something, please forward that information to myself. It will go to Jay Hubel, who is the broadband project manager. But we also send that stuff over to Carol Schalver, who is the cable contract coordinator. And she will look at the addresses and those types of things and see if there's a possibility, if there's some way to get those people's service. So we're very proactive in doing that if we have the people, you know, working with the public and helping them get what they need.
Excellent.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, commissioners.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Bokey. Bring us home with the countywide energy management program.
Morning, commissioners.
Morning.
Morning. We just wanted to take a couple of minutes and share with you and the tens of people watching at home what Public Works has been doing behind the scenes in regards to an energy management program. I'm here today with Scott Graff, a project specialist in Public Works, and our goal is to give you a brief history, what we're doing today, and some of our plans for the future. So with that said, I'll hand it over to Scott.
Good morning, commissioners.
Good morning.
Morning.
Just wanted to start off with talking about our energy conservation efforts so far, primarily talking about solar panels and hybrid electric vehicles. The county purchased its first hybrid vehicle in 2007. It was a Honda Civic, and then a 2009 Toyota Prius followed shortly there. We currently have a total of 22 hybrid vehicles in our fleet, most of which I believe are being utilized by the Sheriff's Department. September of 2015, the county entered into a solar power and service agreement with Sun Edison Origination One LLC. And this agreement resulted in three solar sites around the county, one being at Carroll Community College, the second was the Hampstead Wastewater Treatment Plant, and then we also had one at the Hoods Mill Landfill. And all the numbers I'm getting ready to give you are calendar year 2022 numbers. The community college facility produced one gigawatt of power in 2022. The Hampstead Wastewater Treatment Plant produced two gigawatts. And then the Hoods Mill Landfill, which actually came online later than the other two in 2018, that produced in 2022 3.6 gigawatts of energy. So these three sites together in 2022, 6.8 gigawatts of production. And we have a regional energy advisory service provider known as ENLX, and then they estimated that our cost savings in 2022 by having these three facilities online was $366,846. And before I get into another current, more current solar project, I wanted to turn it over to Brian to talk about Johnson Controls and other efforts.
Yeah, I sent an update probably earlier this year about our contract with Johnson Controls. That's out of our facilities group. They basically have five major objectives. Identify energy savings opportunities, reduce future repair costs, extend asset life, ensure productive environments, and promote healthy and safe workplaces. We've been working with them for the past 20 years, and our contract currently runs through FY '32. Great working relationship with them, all again, doing lighting retrofits, building envelopes, water conservation, smart energy controls throughout our 26 buildings. They're also in the Carroll County Community College, library, senior centers, courts, detention centers, and some of the parks.
November of 2018, the county entered into a master power purchase agreement with Standard Solar. A site was eventually located northeast of Cleese Mill Road in Ronsdale. Site planned for this is expected this summer, hopefully by the end of August. And it's expected, according to Standard Solar, to produce four to four and a half gigawatts annually. The FY 2024 county budget projects electric usage by the county to be roughly 20 gigawatts. So if the county were to offset, or attempt to offset all 20 gigawatts, the cost savings would be estimated to be about a million dollars annually.
You said a million dollars annually?
Yes.
And how close are we now to that?
With the three sites we currently have online, produces $367,000 in savings. So we're probably about 40% there, maybe a little less.
Yeah, I kind of look at this as like the AgPRAZ program. You know, we, we have this big goal, and we're kind of chipping away at it as we go through and as we progress. So, sorry, I didn't.
That's it.
That's it. So, yeah. With all that being said, I believe Public Works Department can take the lead in a countywide energy management program. We're uniquely positioned to take the lead due to many of our existing roles and responsibilities throughout the bureaus, whether it be building construction with new projects and building renovations, our equipment and fleet management group, land acquisition and survey support, and our solid waste bureau with recycling and sustainability. In my short time here, I've seen a few missed opportunities for funding for smart energy initiatives, and I want that to change. With your support, we'll continue making progress towards making Carroll County net zero. Thank you for your time, and we'll be happy to answer any questions.
First, on the, on the solar fields. I know on community solar, there are a bunch of restrictions on properties and such. On these commercial On these commercial fields, like, for instance, Carroll Community College, suppose they wanted to do another one the same size on their property? Are they allowed to? Are there restrictions, what you can do on the same piece of property, or is it pretty much open?
I believe they could expand if they wanted to, yes.
Okay, yeah, somebody in the community told me they can't do anymore because you're not allowed to do a second one, but, which is maybe true with community, but not commercial, I don't think.
All of these sites are what we would call aggregate net metering, so none of the power is actually being used on-site, it's being put into the grid.
Yes, yes. One thing, I don't believe you really got into depth, is the resources it would take to do the work that you're saying you want to own up to.
Yes, Commissioner.
Take on. So you're gonna have to break down that, do the analysis on that, provide it, because, I mean, are we talking additional bodies, additional time, you know, contractual work?
Sure. Yeah, we have a couple of plans in our upper sleeves, not really prepared to talk about today in public, but, um, yes, we do have some plans. And, uh, you know, hopefully in the future, if there is an appetite for this, which seems like there is, we can definitely continue to dig into this and present some further proposals for this work.
And to your point about, you know, missed opportunities, you know, if those do come up, please do not hesitate to let us know. Because if there's a way that we can save taxpayer money by going after something, I want to do that.
Yeah, so I'll just give you one example. There was one grant we were looking into to do some HVAC work, but they were looking for the county's official energy management plan. And although we're, we have all these great initiatives out there, we don't have an official energy management plan to share with outside agencies. So that's something, you know, one of the first kind of objectives of this group would be to create a plan for, for the county moving forward. So again, you know, all these little pieces would need to be in play to get these opportunities, but yes, certainly keep, keep you all in the loop.
And so how long would it take to come up with some kind of energy direction, energy plan, I guess? What'd you call it?
Open for discussion, but a county energy management program.
County energy management program.
So there's all the buzzwords, you know, green, sustainability, infrastructure, net zero, I just kind of, we're focused on energy. You know, I don't see it being green solutions, you know, I'll save that for Chris Heine and stormwater management and green roofs. Us, it's more the boilers and HVACs and potential solar on roof, things like that.
So I, I appreciate you going down that road, because I noticed, you know, net zero was mentioned in here. I don't think the county has a official goal or board-voted goal to be net zero, if I'm not mistaken.
You are correct. Yep, that's why we're kind of here, getting the ball rolling on the conversation.
I appreciate your approach to it, which is, you know, how does it benefit the bottom line? It benefits the environment in the process, that's great. So, yeah, I appreciate this and that, that approach to it.
Great, thank you.
Net zero is very expensive.
And I'll just echo.
Elusive.
Sorry, I'll just echo your points on that. I hope we also kind of look into the construction side of that, too.
Absolutely.
For both cost savings as well as just the environment as a whole. The solar site map, there's what, is there, I think there's what, roughly 40 commercial sites we're looking at here, I think? I kind of roughly counted, I think it was 40.
I'll go back and look at.
Don't worry about it, I'm just guessing off what I counted. Um, I know there's a couple that had overlap. Do we know what, what level of energy that's producing out of those 40 sites, just out of curiosity? Or is that completely nothing, we have any information?
Most of them are private.
Private, okay. I was just curious.
We could probably make a guess if we would, you know, to measure the solar panels, but then it also depends on the timing of when they were installed as well, because, you know, here, five years later, from our first installation, they're a lot more efficient nowadays.
No, I understand. I was just, I was just curious, because I know you were giving us the numbers where we are. I was just kind of curious where that hypothetically might put us in total between the two groups. Okay.
Right. Thank you for your time.
Well, one more, one more, sorry, I was waiting my term. On buildings, looking back, I was on the Building Committee for Career and Tech and East Middle, and it seems like during those time periods, almost every project, somebody evaluated geothermal, but they didn't seem to evaluate solar, something I've mentioned since last December. It's, what, what was done on, we're ready to do state's attorneys building and the sheriffs, was solar looked at there? And, uh, and can it still be, maybe? It just looks to me like, and I know that's probably the most expensive solar is rooftop, but still, and, and I saw Senator West talk to us, and I don't know, I don't think it got any legs, he was trying to do a bill that every school in the state, you had to evaluate solar on the roof. Well, I look at an existing building, you've got a rooftop that has an age of, pick something, 20 years, you've got HVAC that has an age of 15 years. All you, all you need to do is 14 years in, stick solar up there and really screw up the process of replacement. So it's tough on existing buildings, but on new buildings, it's a different subject. Have we looked at that, and can we, moving forward, and?
Yeah, I think as we move forward, and we're talking about an energy management plan, I was, I was reading through Fredericks, and they have a mandate to include some sort of solar infrastructure on every single project moving forward. I, I believe the state's attorney, we looked at it, given the footprint and the equipment up on the roof, wasn't, wasn't worth it. You know, by the time everything gets installed, we're only looking at a handful of panels. I know that the sheriff's headquarters, it's certainly something we want to look, look into, because it has a much bigger footprint, right, on, on that campus over there. And then also, you know, the potential of this parking garage we've, we've spoke about before, that may be a good opportunity to put that on the roof.
And the sheriff's, which is off the subject here, but kind of, that's probably going to be a, or maybe already is, a PM-type bid.
Yes.
And so is that one of the things that the PM will be tasked with, to evaluate solar?
Yes, to make sure the roof can handle all that. You know, I have solar at home, and I was told, you know, the weight of solar on a roof is about a bag of sugar, you know, a five-pound bag of sugar. It's not a huge load when you're looking at the areas. It's just more getting the right angle, getting the right space, you know, we had a chimney and a couple of vents, so it looks like a Tetris board up there if you look at it, but, you know, it still is worth it for us, but I think that's something that we always have to take into consideration.
And then you, also, you mentioned vehicles, and then great answers on that, thanks. Vehicles, I would hope, I don't want to sound too negative, but some of this electrical vehicle stuff is total pipe dream and not practical, and would cost us more money than it would gain us. Now, hybrid vehicles and maybe electric moving forward can be, but anything you do with a, with a plan for the county will evaluate what's cost-effective, not just what's touchy-feely.
Hundred percent, yeah, we've had a lot of discussions about our transit system, moving to EV buses, and, you know, as, as hard as we want it to happen, it's, it, technology's not there, we're not there, the buses are three, four times the cost, so, you know, we have no intention anytime soon pushing that on, on anybody. Um, you know, Scott did some research. On average, they're getting about an 80 to 90 mile range, and that won't even handle our shortest routes in Westminster.
It's great in theory.
One day, one day.
Thanks.
You're welcome.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Commissioners.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Swim, do we have any callers, public comment?
Yes, sir, I believe we have one caller. Caller one, could you please use star six to unmute? At that point, you'll have three minutes, please identify yourself. Caller, star six to unmute. Bueller?
Yes, hello. Good morning, Commissioners, this is Catherine Adelaide, Carroll County Republican Central Committee.
I apologize, Catherine. Catherine, do you have an address for our records?
I'm sorry?
Do you have an address for our records?
P O Box 127.
Okay, thank you.
Westminster, Maryland.
Okay, thank you.
Two one one, thank you, two one one five eight. Yes, good evening, good afternoon, I'm sorry, thank you for your service. I don't know how you keep your schedule, I really have to squeeze it in just to get this public comment in, once a week. I will be gone next week, maybe that'll make someone happy, but anyway, I really do appreciate the opportunity to be able to use the system. I'm not the most tech-savvy person in the world, so I really encourage, as a central committee member, we want to include more people in all of our proceedings, and I know you do as well. So I do want to thank you for the technology that makes this possible, because mostly I just don't have the time to come down in person. Today, I did want to just inform you, the Defend Life, Face the Truth Tour will be coming through Westminster. I don't know if you're familiar with it, this is a pro-life tour of 15 cities in Maryland. This will be Wednesday, July 26th, from 4:30 to 6:00 at Route 140 and 31. The tour actually begins on the 23rd and runs through the, I believe, the 28th. I count it as my summer vacation, even though it's quite a grueling tour, we are staying out on the roadways, exercising our First Amendment rights for life. Most of you are aware of the horrific constitutional amendment that is coming, has been, you know, will be coming for a vote as a referendum. So we're trying to really, we do show victim images at these tours of first, second, and third trimester abortions. And every year, we get usually at least one or two women or couples who see these images and understand and change their minds. So these, these victim images are difficult, but they do save lives, and we just can't end abortion until we tell the truth about abortion. So I hope some of you could stop by and just honk if you drive by and say hello to us, or, you know, feel free to pull up on the media and hold a sign for a few minutes. My second notice is, we have the, the central committee has, we've been doing the carnivals this summer, start registering voters and getting yard signs. Our next one will be at the 4H, for the 4H at the Ag Center, from July 29th through August 4th. So we hope that you will take the time to come by the trailer and say hello and check us out. Finally, I would recommend the movie, The Sound of Freedom, you may have heard about it, it's making quite an uproar in conservative circles. This is a movie about child sex trafficking, it's extremely powerful. I do encourage each of you to view this film. I have been working with the manager at the Westminster Cinemas, and they have extended this until next Thursday. So I hope you get out there, it is something you can do. Maryland is 22nd in sex trafficking because of our location. So I would encourage you to get out and see that film. I will be on the tour next week, so I won't be able to drop in and say hello. Thank you again for all of your work, and we'll be in touch.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Catherine. Rich, did you want to make a comment?
Not this time.
Okay, Chris, are there any other comments? Or any other callers?
It's all the callers I have, thanks.
Okay. I need a review of the closed minutes from July 13th for land acquisition.
Motion to approve? Second.
Okay, that was entirely too fast.
We were reading ahead.
Okay, I got a motion, I got a second and a discussion on this. Sitting here, none all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Wanda, why don't you come on up? Does anybody have anything for open admin? I think you do, don't you?
I've got a couple of quick things. First, Wanda, when you're ready there, want to add briefings, if we could, for the farm alcohol producers, as well as the restaurants and ag agricultural district that was down in planning and zoning this week, and that's now been moved out of that, so we'd like to add that to the schedule. And then also, if we could, next week, let me see, if it'd be possible to say bump item four, item three to item four, if everybody would be okay with that. I'd like, since we discussed this earlier, I'd like to put the Boys and Girls Club of Carroll County at number three, if we could put them in. They're going to come in with Department of Citizen Services anyway, but I'd like to add them, they're going to give us an update on what they're, what they're doing in Carroll County. Where's her name? Thank you.
I thought there was, didn't we talk about stuff from planning?
Yes, that's, yeah, we're adding that as well.
Oh, okay.
Yep.
Okay, got it.
Anything else? Open admin. Okay, let's look at the agendas. July 24th, 25th, 26th, nothing scheduled. July 27th, Thursday, we go into open at 9:15? Okay. And we're going to talk about not in Carroll funding, committed for opioid issues for fiscal year 2024, approval to submit the FY 25 jurisdictional family services grant, but you want to put something?
I wanted to, I thought we could maybe, maybe to put them right after that.
Okay.
So just move budget down to four.
Okay. So we'll do that with the Boys and Girls Club, and then we'll go into approval of resolution fiscal year 23, year-end adjustments. Mr. Zaleski, talk about the, excuse me, school impact fees, and prepare ourselves to make a decision. Mr. Zaleski will navigate us through that. Exercise option to purchase the Kyle Trevor Franklin and Mark Warren Franklin properties through the Critical Farm Program. We will purchase of LifePak CR2 defibrillators from, for EMS, purchase a Chevy Tahoe for our Sheriff's Department, demolition of 207 and 209 Greenwood Ave. Are those the building numbers? Are those buildings, 207 and 209?
Address.
That's, okay, it's address, thanks. So demolition, discussion of the demolition of the addresses, 207 and 209 Greenwood Ave, which are our state's attorney's office, right? Okay. Contract award, fiscal year sampling laboratory testing and reporting services for various water and wastewater treatment facilities. And contract award, installation of an insertion valve in the Oakland Road, 24-inch diameter water main. From TPW, nothing scheduled on Friday, Saturday, and Commissioner Kern has the podcast for that week. Following week, July 20, excuse me, July 31st. We have a breakfast at the Carroll County 4H FFA and FFA Fair at 8:00 in the morning. Currently, Commissioner Kyler and I are scheduled to attend, I don't know if others will be.
I'll check when I see, I think I should be able to do that.
Good opportunity with the kids, and then they take us around and show us the layouts of the fair.
That, I mean, you think that'll probably be over like 12?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Okay, then, yeah, then please do put me down for that, okay.
Yeah. Tuesday, August 1st.
Thank you, Wanda.
We will get some ice cream over at Simmons Ice Cream, 100th Year Proclamation, and then the National Night Out, what we have here is just the Sykesville Freedom Firehouse, I will be attending, but I do know Commissioner Goran's going to be attending a bunch in Westminster, and I would expect the others will as well.
Right.
So if we can just get with the schedulers on the other commissioners and where they'll be attending, because it's going to be county-wide. On Wednesday, August 2nd, Commissioner Kyler and I, and I don't know if others, I expect would, attend the cake auction at the 4H Fair.
Wanda, you can put me down for that, I will be attending that, that's always a great event.
I think they raised eighty thousand or something.
It was like eighty thousand last year.
Crazy. Thursday, August 3rd, let's see, changes to Chapter 170 on the construction codes. Mr. Bokey will, well, his team will walk us through that. And then that afternoon, we have, or I have, the Greater Baltimore Committee mid-year briefing up in Baltimore. On Friday, August 4th, is the livestock auction, again, at the fair. Commissioner Kyler and I, and I would expect others also to be attending, it's going to be a good time. Saturday, August 5th, the Westminster Fire Department. Saturday, August 5, the Westminster Fire Department, Citizens Fire Academy, Commissioner Gordon will be attending, and then the Reeds Across America Mobile Education Exhibit over Babylon Fault, Commissioner Vigliotti, and can you say you were also?
Wanda, you can put me down for that, I'm going to be kind of doing double duty that morning, but I'll be at both.
But that Babylon Fault goes all the way through to 7.
Yes.
That evening. And then I'll be doing a podcast that afternoon. I thought we were doing a budget next week, aren't we? Did I miss something?
Talking about impact fees.
You're talking impact fees, right?
Impact fees.
That's what you mean.
No, 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 I thought we were doing a budget work session.
On Tuesday.
Yes, that is correct.
25th.
So on Tuesday, the 25th.
That's, I don't, that's closed.
Yeah, yeah, but it's just a, oh.
Okay, did we not announce that? Sorry. Okay.
Well, we'll still have a work session amongst us. Thanks.
At one point of, the Citizen Fire Academy, my understanding is that you can go to their website and RSVP.
Website, you have to RSVP, it's either website or you can go through social media and get there, but yes, you do have to RSVP.
Important to know that people are listening and want to go.
Absolutely, yep.
They're being encouraged to attend. I'm a tentative, but I'll get back.
And it's 18 and above, you said.
18 and up, yes.
Yep, 18 and above, okay. Okay, Wanda, how'd I do? Okay. What I need now is a motion to adjourn, recess and closed.
Close for land acquisition.
Motion to go into closed for land acquisition.
Followed by?
Adjournment.
Recess.
Yeah, all of that.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? Is in here, none all in favor?
Aye.